All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome back from a three day weekend there. Hopefully, everybody had a relaxing time. The teachers are all back in session. Kids are all back in session, so welcome to our September 8th meeting here. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. I'm going to do a quick roll call here on our and if you're joining us, if you could please make sure that you mute your mute yourself. That way we don't have background noise. All right, so to get our kick ourselves off here. Start off our meeting. I'm going to do a quick roll call. Make sure all of our board directors are in session. So Director Cooley with us?
Hey, good evening.
All right, Director Jeffries.
Yes, hello.
All right, Director Stoffer?
Yes, good evening.
All right, and Director Pickens?
Good evening.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, well, next up, let's start with our pledge of allegiance here. So if you could all rise and join me in the pledge. Right. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Okay. Well, next up, just a couple of quick announcements here, reminders. So as we know, as we see, we're in virtual meeting and we're following virtual meeting guidelines and safety protocol. So again, as I stated, please keep yourself muted. And Dr. Clark, I think you're the background now is that we got going right now. So we are still under limited O PMA, so we will not be taking oral verbal comments at this time today. So any written comments can still be sent in prior to meetings to Tracy Norman at T Norman at squimschools.org, and then we will read those at the appropriate next meeting. Next up, let's get Director Coo, you want to read our vision and message statement for us today?
You got it. And while I'm pulling that up, just a reminder to school board at squimschools.org is another way for folks to submit those comments. I appreciate you keeping that open.
Yep, thanks for reminding that.
You got it. All right, our vision, our community inspires and prepares each student to thrive through our mission, which is in connection with our community. The Squim School District empowers staff to inspire hope and provide flexible, innovative learning opportunities in a safe and respectful environment, so each student thrives.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, so our first item of the evening is Director Stoffers got a presentation on the legislative priorities and directors, just so you know, we have a business, board business, a discussion under board business later on, so if you could maybe hold your questions and comments to that point, and we'll do that later under board business. Should not be any action taken today, but more informative question and answer for later. Okay, so with that said, Jim, you are up, sir.
Thank you. Yes, so just some updates from the last presentation, which was at a little higher level. Now we're bringing it down. And then we'll have a future workshop. Major update on this one is on that first slide. The voting prioritization of positions will actually occur now the week of the 28th of September through 5 October. But not to worry, because all board members can participate in this general assembly, which I'll discuss as we move along. Those links there help guide us and then also staff and community members through the work of WASDA and the Legislative Assembly. Can you go to the next slide, please? And I'm hoping everybody can hear me all right?
Yep.
Okay. So on the next one, just this is some of the processes that happened prior to and then during the assembly. So there's been several caucus meetings held, and those are large schools, small school, trust lands, equity, et cetera. Those have been held. There was three amendments that have been received, and that was during the amendment window. And we'll go into those a little bit later here. That other link there shows how goes to the what's now called the Strategic Abessy page, used to be the government relations. But it's has everything that you wanted to know about the legislative program. And then important link there for fellow board members is that section two proposals and positions. And then next section there, just to help with the understanding, and a lot of this work, of course, was done by the ledge committee and resolutions committee. How back starting in January and then through the summer and where we review all the positions. And so the first one is you'll see a key that says AC, and that's amended or declared by position proposals. And those are ones we went through and looking through the lens of some equity lenses, and then if trying to bring them up to current events is the lens we look through. And then if there's a C or an E or a D, that means it's either been consolidated or it was due for elimination or elimination is mainly if a position is no longer applicable, and we'll talk about that a little more. And then new P, MP is all those new positions, and then RP is returning, and we'll talk about highlight that a little more. Remember LPs is that's the legislative position that once it's been introduced requires action annually for four years, and that's then related directly to what those returning positions. And then standing legislation positions, those have been determined to be important or university accepted to be considered for that standing legislative position status. Next item there will take you to, and Tracy, could you click on that link, please? So in front of you there is, and this goes back to the 2020 legislative session, and you've heard me talk about the buckets that we use for placing those positions and learning staff, capital facilities, funding allocations and governance. Trace, if you could scroll to, I believe it's page four, yeah, page four of that document. Okay, and stop right there. All right, so this is right there. So these are from last year and list all the positions and how how they were prioritized by the assembly last year. And so that should help my fellow board members in seeing how everything rolled out from last year. And that's page four through seven of this document. You see the other buckets there. Then after that, it goes into great detail of what those positions are. So next slide, please, Tracy. All right, so as I mentioned before, caucus and membership meetings have occurred. What's coming up next is some orientation videos and then one page guide sheets. And so I asked my colleagues to be watching your email for those because those are going to be rolling out here probably this week and definitely the next. We have a whole paramitarian committee that's been established that they'll be in a little room during the general assembly to help navigate through virtual general assembly meetings. And it'll be tech help, tech help desk will be available for folks that are having trouble signing on. And again, watch your emails because there'll be instructions coming out. And from there, the assembly goes live at 8:00 AM. As you're voting delegate, I have, I'll be getting a different login credentials, but then everybody else can join and you can join anytime and come back and throughout the whole day, and it's 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And then again, the the actual prioritization of the positions will occur because there's just a lot of work going through all those. There's a total of 75 that will be going through before. So next slide, please, Tracy. So first up is the permanent positions, and those come from the resolution committee. And these are WASDAs and ours, the enduring value beliefs, and these are found on page 12 through 25 of the handbook, which you guys have the link. And those are also divided into five buckets that are real similar to the legislative ones. So there's 16 total that we're looking at. 12 have been amended or clarified. Two are consolidation, and then there's two new positions. The resolution committee had recommended a due pass. However, two amendments have come in during that amendment window, and we will all see those on the 18th of September. And the originals of those positions are on 12, on page 12 and 18. And one of them is the equity statement, and then the other one is the achievement and opportunity gap. Basically, how I understand it is that's the the amendment puts it back more into the original statement that the rest that the WASDA board had submitted. But we'll see more of that on the 18th. And I would of those 16 total, I would recommend a due pass from us pending a review of those amendments. Next slide, please, Tracy. So now we go into the legislative positions. And this follows to the work of the legislative committee in which I am one of the the reps for director area four, which is Clallam, Jefferson, Kitsap, and then the North Mason School District. There's two legislative reps per director areas and one resolution committee rep. So legislative positions are always focused on current events, action, and then they always have to be prioritized. And there's another key there, list all of them. We have 57 of them, five buckets, and all that can be found on page 26 through 75 of your handbook. So of that 12 have been, they were amended. And that was worked done by the legislative committee and then various individual school boards submitting items to be at the for amendment. There's 20 new proposals. And all received a do pass with the exception of this item, and it's number 52, it's new item number 12 called Equable Collections for Small Schools. And the reason why it received a do not pass is because the ledge committee felt after long discussion that first, we already have a position in support of funding for small for small schools, and they already receive additional funding through the small schools factor. As an association, we felt that we should not put ourselves into a position promoting inequities and disparities of funding between districts. And as you read through that the actual position, you can see, you'll read through it, provide your thoughts on it, but that's the reason that the ledge committee gave it a do not pass. From there, you can, the next item, there's 20 returning positions. And these are ones that came in without any amendments whatsoever, and they were scrubbed through by by the subcommittees of the legislative committee, looking for make sure they were up reflected current events, equity lens. And what we'll probably see during this general assembly is that there'll be a consent agenda for those 20. But with the with the possibility of pulling out an item, just as we do with our consent agenda or any board does. Then from there, two of the legislative positions are eligible for the standing legislative positions. Those are on page 74 and those two right there, and they have been up for a vote for four years, and so they're due to be considered as standing legislative positions. And then we received one amendment during that window, and it was a revision prototype school model formula, and that's LP 7.4. A. And again, that amendment will be posted on the 18th. Next, there was four that were are being considered to be consolidated into two, two different ones instead of four LPs. Two of them deal with special ed and needs for students and then also training for staff, and we combine those two under one. That's the consideration is that under one LP. And then the next one is full funding of basic ed and including graduation requirements in there because those, right now, they're currently two. But the legislative committee felt there had been enough work done between those two that it warrant consolidating them and making it a little easier for the membership to follow. And then there's one elimination, and that's the walk kids. And that one, it's, it is no longer applicable, and all the the reason behind walk is it's has all been met. And you'll see that if when you look in the book. Next slide, please, Tracy. So here. Next steps calendar for us, the 18th. We will all get an email with those three amendments. I'm working on a survey with Tracy, and the goal is to before this weekend to get it out to you, and then you'll have until our our next meeting on the 21st, where we have scheduled a workshop to review the survey. And then look at approving a slate of legislation positions during the meeting portion. September 25th is general assembly, and then there's that date again about where the priorities will get submitted. And then after that occurs on our October 13th, the ledge committee gets back together and we review those, how the voting turned out. And then that's how we start developing the legislative agenda for the next session. And then that gets announced during our annual conference. Couple items there, I've listed Senator Wellman, who's the chair of the early learning K-12 work group, and her vice chair is Senator Wilson. They are starting up an early learning work group, and they're looking for interested folks. I, that's the letter and the announcement has been on a couple of my director area for emails. I know right now that the superintendent at North Mason is interested. And so you know, our director area, you know, we stretch from Neabay then back east and to Bremerton, North Kitsap, and a lot of diversity there. Small school, large school, connection with our tribes rule. And so it'd be good to have some school board members and some maybe a couple of other superintendents on that. So I'll send out another reminder. I mean, it will go to all of the director area four, but be helpful to know of who is interested. Next, next slide, please. So this is going back in time a little bit. This is our 2018 and 2019 legislative priorities. And the one on the left is 19 and the 18 is on the right. And all of those are still legislative positions, and you'll see, if you see an NP, those were ones that were new positions back then, and now have become LPs. And this, I will update that in the document that you will get during your survey, but this gives you an idea. You know, we have our strategic plan and then which focuses on local, how our local engagement also. And then the equity lens, several items in there, you'll see like forest revenue, local control of school improvement plans. Career and tech education funding, graduation requirements, forest revenue apportionment. Next slide, please, Tracy. And then this, it says 2019 on the left, but it's when we do this was, of course, in while we were still in 2019, but it became our 2020 legislative priorities, and there's our top 20 after from our survey last year, and I think you will find a lot of comparison between our similarities between this and going back to 2018. Next slide, please. So this is where we're at right now, and it's remember, it's a year round legislative outreach and advocacy, and we're in this review positions, gather input. And that should say general assembly, and as soon as I get an updated slide, this slide from WASDA, then I'll be inserting that in there. After this, then we get into the October, December, which is the warm up phase. And working at how bills become a bill and input for bills. And speaking of that, I had attached to email I sent out this morning from that Representative Ortiz self had sent out. She had done a bill last year, and it didn't make it out of the House, but it is eligible for consideration this next year. So she's seeking input. And it deals with, and I'm trying to go back to my notes here on the stress that our teachers go through. And so it'd be helpful, and here's an opportunity as us as a board to review that and submit input from Squim School District perspective. Next slide, please. And that wraps it up. There's the links there. Also, it's the list of the other leader leadership for director area four, which Bruce Richards, he out of Central Kitsap, he's the resolution chair, and then Carolyn Perkins is the WASDA board rep for director area four. Our own director Gibson, I don't know why I didn't put that on there yet, is our WIAA rep, and my apologies, Director Gibson. So that covers this and be standing by for questions during the discussion portion. Thank you very much.
All right, great. Thanks. Thank you, Jim. Always appreciate that and discussion a little bit later here coming up. Okay, back up here to where we were. All right, so first item of business would be the approval of our minutes for our August 17th minute.
I shall move Director Jeffries.
All right, thank you.
Director Pickens, I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to second any discussion on the minutes. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. Next up is we have any changes to our agenda for today?
There are none.
Okay, so hearing no changes, approval of our agenda as listed?
Move to approve as presented.
All right.
Second from Director Stoffer.
All right, we've got a motion to second any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right.
All right, any opposed, same sign? Okay, next up, we have our consent agenda. Motion to approve.
Move to approve as presented.
All right.
I'll second.
Motion on the second, any discussion?
Good to see some familiar names, and I don't know if we have any new faces joining the family this year, but always appreciate the folks we have on board.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yes, I'm glad to see Dr. D has rejoined us. It's good to see her out there handing out curriculum and books and to our high school students.
Yeah, all right. Okay. Anything else? All right, with that, hearing no more, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Carries.
Just a real quick point, we only have three new employees this year. Two, a psychologist, a speech therapist, and a new ag teacher. It's probably a record for Squim. Record low, only three new employees.
All right, thank you for sharing. At least we got some of our peeps back. Okay. So we have no public comment to read today, so next up, we would love like to welcome back our senior representative this year, Olivia Preston, and our new junior representative, Alyssa, and you'll have to remind me again how to pronounce your last name. And I'm going to lead off with you for your for your presentation.
Thank you. I am Alyssa Beebye.
Beebye, okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's a, it's a hard last name.
Got it.
So I mailed Gray Wolf Elementary and Helen Haller Elementary School. And they were very thankful to and they were very thankful towards the Squim School District, to the staff and the teachers and the parents and everyone. Gray Wolf says that they had a great start thanks to Dr. Clark and Director Jeffries that came to visit. They would like to thank Assistant Superintendent Maglin, Director Young, Elizabeth Lawson, Isaac Rappelje and their teams for putting their work. So both canvass and clever could function for the students. One of their third grade teachers Cheryl Gardner spent hours on the Gray Wolf Canvas. The introductory day of Canvas was mostly successful. They were able to help many families with their issues. The enrollment is holding steady. Their AP Jennifer Lopez continues to reach out to the parents in efforts to bring CVIEW and homeschooling students back to Gray Wolf Elementary. She said, "Thank you to all our teachers, parents and students for getting their, this unique school year. Off to a great start." And Helen Haller says that the teachers and the staff of Helen Haller have worked hard to start this school year with a clean and safe building for the kids. With the help of the Health Clerk, Sherri Hendrickson and the Secretaries Crystal Smith and Kimberly Bashi, they have been in constant communication with the parents to assure them hope and security for this school year. They would also like to thank the district for all the support they got for. Thank you.
All right, thank you and thanks for a great first presentation to the board, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. If I could put you on the spot, real quick while we've got you, how was your first couple of days back at school?
It's been very good, in fact, I also started working when the school started. So it's been, I've tried to balance both work and the school at the same time. The, this clever, the clever system is kind of confusing at some point, but I'm trying to figure it out.
All right, well, great, thanks, thanks for sharing that, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, and next up, welcome back Olivia, you're up.
Okay, so the middle school like wanted to, having a dry rally for materials on Wednesday, their families will be in parking lot between 2:00 and 5:30. Their team will be expanding their knowledge and skill with Canvas and Teams and their newest professional development. As part of that learning, they will be building a sequence of six to 30 minute lessons to grow our students' abilities with Canvas and Teams. Canvas navigation, assignment creation and turning in feedback from staff where and how to access misrecorded live sessions, Teams navigation and Teams files. They will be dividing into social, emotional growing through a new program for us during Wolf Pack called Habitats, Habitudes, sorry. The program comes from the primary resource Tim Elmore used by the district's Gen Z speaker last year. This came about as a byproduct of our marching off the map book study. And then the high school would like to share that they are having academic materials pick up from 8:00 to 12:00 and then again from 5:00 to 6:00 PM. Also, the SHS staff attending a character strong training tomorrow from 12:30 to 3:30 to provide us with more creative ways to build a caring culture in this online world. The high school had a drive-through welcome back that happened on the first day of school. And then I didn't, the OPA didn't share it. That's all I got for you.
All right, great, thanks, thank you Olivia and welcome back. And are you back started because you're running start, correct?
Yeah, I actually don't go back until the 28th, so I'm, I'm just working right now.
All right, well, welcome back to the board, we've missed you.
Thank you.
I keep hitting mute myself, all right, next up we have our board communication, regular board communication, we'll start off with Director Q.
All right, good evening, well, I don't know about the rest of y'all, but that really warmed my heart and got me pumped up to hear two student reps speak. It feels halfway normal. So Olivia, great to hear your voice, good to see you or hear you again. And then our new rep, just appreciate the update and looking forward to working with you this year, Alyssa. So just a couple of updates or just some thoughts, welcome back to our students and staff. Obviously, like everyone, I'm excited to see activity going on in and around our schools, whether physically or virtually. Awesome as a parent, you know, enjoyed both the high school and the Helen Haller Drive-Thru events. I'll be there tomorrow as well for the Gray Wolf event as well. And I have the double benefit of being to see those through the eyes of a School Board member and a parent. I wouldn't otherwise clog the, the traffic if it was just me as a School Board member, but it's been great to see, I know Gray Wolf had a, had a good event too. And just obviously us operating in the new normal and, you know, what that means. It's just great to see everyone and see some encouragement and enthusiasm for this bizarre start to a school year that we're all going through. Really appreciate all the schools, I think there's a noticeable coordinated outreach occurring primarily through social media, but also our email channels. I'm seeing that, you know, as, I guess as a parent again, but also, you know, on Facebook and the like. And so really cheers to that concerted effort and it's noticeable, so I really appreciate that. As an aside, whoever came up with the Gray Wolf campaign to feature, you know, elementary teachers back when they were elementary students, that was, that's a home run campaign. So that's been really fun to see roll out. And then just a heartfelt thank you to all our staff. I had a chance to speak casually with a few teachers across the state over this weekend. And I know that it's not easy and I know that the learning curve is steep. You know, we have a cadre of trained professionals who were tossed a significant shift. Notice I didn't say pivot unless they come at me with pitchforks. But, you know, really just been, been impressed with their professionalism coming through and taking this challenge on, I think this is unprecedented, I hope we never have to see this again. And just my heartfelt thank you to everyone that is losing hair and brain cells trying to get into this, again, new normal and trying to remember what asynchronous and synchronous means at any given moment. So just gratitude to share today, I have some comments for the discussion, look forward to chatting with you all about, but that's all I have.
All right, great, thank you, Director Jeffries.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, welcome Alyssa and Olivia. Good to hear, get you guys started and to hear from you, looking forward to great things from you guys this year. Also, about the only thing I, well, a lot of things I've been doing, I did stop by Gray Wolf when they were distributing materials and stood there and looked and watched and stayed out of the way and wished them all well and let them get on with their work. The other thing I've been doing is spending some time online with some online meetings with other School Board members, mainly just sitting there and listening to them. I can tell you that all around the state, east side, west side, north, south, a lot of the same concerns we have right here in Squim are concerned that people have everywhere, so it's just not, it's not us, we're kind of all in the same boat together. I did request from Dr. Clark that maybe, since I don't have a student in the system, that to be adopted by an elementary teacher, middle school teacher, high school teacher, something we can arrange with the principals over the next couple of weeks that I can, they can adopt me as a student, so I can maybe sit in and see what's going on on their remote learning, just to get a better feel for it and to maybe enjoy myself as long as they don't ask me some hard questions, I'll be, I'll be good. So looking forward to that. And yeah, just thank you to all the staff, teachers, everybody. It's a tough year and it sounds like we've gotten off to a good start. I'm sure it's not perfect and we can work on improving things, but that can do attitude is really necessary and I think Squim is going to do a pretty good job at this and we're going to do the best we can as we work through this COVID crisis together with the community, thank you.
Awesome, thank you, thank you Director Jeffries, all right, Director Stoffer, you're up.
Yes, thank you and welcome to Alyssa and then welcome back Olivia. Good to see you here and, you know, that student voice is vital to our discussions, so it's good to have you here. Want to give a shout out to the specialists at Helen Haller Elementary that did a video last week and that was very heartfelt and so I, hopefully I got shared out to everybody, but just highlights the work that's going on at all of our elementaries and OPA and our, and then the middle school and the high school also. This morning I got a text from Colleen McInler, who's the Executive Director of EDC and she was in a county meeting and she was asking me about our CARES funding and what we spent on it. So I directed her to, well, I gave her the contact information for Dr. Clark and then Jennifer. So I hope you'll be able to assist her with her questions. Also, I saw a posting about where the Squim High School Alumni Association was meeting with Myron about conversations about naming the stadium after him. So I, I know we had a discussion, board discussion a couple of meetings ago and I want to make sure we, we haven't lost track of that because we have a couple of policies that put that naming of that under the board's approval. So I just, I don't want us to fall behind on that outreach there. Couple of items from the WASDA calls on Thursday and I, you've probably have seen this in some of the emails. Yakima School District has this, it's called Project Gemini and it's a complete, totally outreach from the community, the tribes, school districts, businesses on internet, broadband, wifi and a great presentation by their Head of Technology at the Yakima School District. And I know that WASDA is going to be following up with more information, but I would encourage us to reach out and find out a little bit more about that. And then Senator Wilson's office has put out a, and this has also been on several of the WASDA's calls, it's called a shared work program and don't want to go into great details because there's probably other board members have some information on it also, but looks like it's pretty beneficial to all considered. And then again, back on the education workshop that Senator Wellman is promoting and then the input from Representative Ortiz Self. And then I just want to start, remind us all that about the outreach to the community and follow up. Community is always interested in what we're doing, what the schools are doing because they deeply care. I want to make sure that we're reaching our families and that there's some touch points there's with our students on tech support, meals, attendance and then how our teachers and staff are doing also in this, in this whole complex teaching that's going on right now. And otherwise, thank you, good to see everybody.
Just, so I, Director Stoffer, I haven't spoken to Phyllis Meyer, she's the one that brought it to the board's attention. And I emailed her after we had our last board discussion about naming the football field and I told her that we would bring it up at our first live board meeting. So she, she is aware of that and I plan on doing that.
Thank you, Dr. Clark, I just saw the post in Alumni Association and that they were actually going to go to Myron today, visit him and, and give him a resolution paper on that of what they were planning to do. And so I, I just don't want us to go sideways on that discussion type thing, but thank you for the outreach.
Okay, thank you. Director Pickens, you're up.
Hi, good evening, well, actually Director Stoffer stole, stole a little bit of my thunder. I was just going to talk briefly about the, the, the video that came out for the, the specialists that put out a video and if you could see the, the look on my, my seven year old's face when she saw them dancing around, it was, it was quite amazing, but you could just really tell that the staff is, is really focused on connecting any way they can with the students. And I, again, it's not the same as in person, sure, I mean, that's, that's for sure, but I really commend the staff for just making every effort to try to, try to reach out and connect. And my message back to them is, based on the eyes of my youngest daughter, it was, it was working to the degree that they wanted to. So my, 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 my thanks to the staff for making such, such a significant effort in that regard. Been, been involved with hearing a lot of the meetings about different, different funding that's, that's going to be available as we, as we kind of progress through the, this, this COVID pandemic. So I was happy to get some, some good news in some regards. Director Stoffer mentioned the, the shared work program, which, you know, we can keep folks whole if their hours are reduced less than that 50%, which is great. But also USDA funding on, on food, I think is, was fantastic news as well as the governor providing some more funding for, for transportation. So I'm, I'm happy that those things are, are in play, but I don't think our, our work is done as a board. I think we, we still need to be very vigilant about what the, the current needs on the ground are. I'm, you know, I think there's still a lot of risks out there. So I, I'm glad to see folks are back and engaging in learning, but I want to make sure that our, our students are protected still and our staff are protected at all levels. So I think it's, definitely needs to continue to be a priority. Obviously, welcome to our, to our new board member, we're happy to, happy to have you Alyssa and welcome back Olivia and that's all for me for now, thanks.
All right, thank you Director Pickens. So not much to report, I did have an opportunity after some technical difficulties and thank you for, Director Pickens for kind of taking the cue and filling in for a little bit during the first day back with the teachers and an opportunity to speak, speak to them. And as I said to them at the time, I, I wished it would have been in person because it was an honor to be able to, to speak to all the staff and welcome them back for the year. But I was able to do it virtually, as I said, after a little bit of, little bit of technical difficulty for some reason I was in the meeting, but it wouldn't let me even find a button to, to speak. So, but, but we accomplished it. Also, again, having a, having a, an FTE myself, a high schooler junior, did get to attend the drive-through first day for the high schoolers and have to say just a wonderful job by, by all the staff and, and the district in putting that together. It was, you know, my daughter enjoyed meeting some of her teachers she didn't know and I probably spent more time talking to staff than, than everybody else going along. So, and I think we even held up traffic while we were talking to my daughter's AP art teacher. She said that those, those two were going on, I think they were honking behind me. But, but anyway, it was, it was good to attend. And then again, tomorrow, I think tomorrow, there's a, there's another event to go pick up materials. And, and, you know, I just appreciate all this, again, as others have said, all the work that's, that staff have done in their off time and now and, and, you know, trying to find their way through all these different technical ways of doing things. I communicated with a couple of teachers over the last couple of days too and I asked them how they were doing and they said, I'm just, I'm trying to learn this Teams thing. Well, we're using Teams at work ourself more as well and I'm, I'm in the same boat, trying to, trying to learn the more ins and outs of Teams and everything too. So I understand some of those challenges. those challenges. But, you know, as I said, at, at the first day, you know, we've got some amazing staff and they're up for the challenge and just appreciate all the work that they're, they're doing. And that's, that's all I have for, to share. All right. So next up, we have our superintendent's report.
As I gotta unmute to talk about, to give my report. Couple of things. One, we have our enrollment today, our official first count of enrollment. And we're down, but we're not down as much as I had anticipated. There's, we've lost several students to homeschool. We're, we're about somewhere in the neighborhood of 50 to 60 students under budget, which I expected 100. So it's a good news, bad news situation. We will figure some things out. In, in the conference call I was in this morning, with all the superintendents at, in our ESD, I still feel relatively good about our numbers. Because Bremerton and Central Kitsap, we're several hundred students under budget. And, and that's typical throughout the region. And the primary, that when, when the question comes up, where are these students going? And the, the primary answer is homeschool. And it's a K2, K4 situation, that the parents are viewing the fact that if their kids have to be virtual or remote, that it's probably, they feel like they can do it from a homeschool situation. And that's kind of all of our speculation. I don't know which director it was that brought us, brought it to up a few minutes ago. But yes, the, we got thrown a curve last week. Actually, two curves. Previous week, Governor Inslee and Superintendent Reichdahl changed some rules. And now we can, we can use school transportation to send out meals. That was the first bit of good news. And the second bit of good news was they extended the summer feeding program through December 31. And while that, both those were good news, it, it did catch us a little bit flat footed in the sense that we were setting up a program where you were going to have to come pick up your meals. And we'd set up Gray Wolf and Squim Middle School. And Meredith had set up a late afternoon, early evening pickup at the food service facility. So we're working, I, so now it's the same as it was in the summer and last spring. Any child living in Squim, ages 2 to 18, can get a free breakfast and a free lunch. We're, probably the one difference that we're working on from last spring is that we want people to sign up for these meals. And last spring, we drove buses out there and made certain stops and allowed the families to, you know, come in and get that because we're giving meals, multiple meals at a time to save families having to go out and pick these up and to save transportation for us. We, we are serving meals at the food service facility. And we intend to be driving out and serving meals on the road Mondays and Wednesdays starting next week. Again, on Mondays, a child would get four meals, breakfast and lunch for Monday and Tuesday. And on Wednesday, they would get six meals, breakfast, lunch for Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. So that's where we're going. Again, good news, but wish we could have had that, that news in the middle of August as opposed to the end. The other thing, the other part of the conference call I was on this morning, well, two conference calls, one with the, with all of the ESD superintendents, and the other was just with the Clallam County superintendents and Dr. Runthank. And our, our numbers are down into the, into the 30s. We've gone from, you know, we went up from the 30s to the mid 30s to the mid 90s in about a week and a half. And now we're going back down. And if we minded our Ps and Qs, over this last Labor Day weekend, and we stayed down, we could be starting school sometime in October. And that, I mean, by starting school, let me be clear, to kick in our AABB program, starting as we had articulated early on before we were required to go remote and virtual. That's a conversation that's going to be ongoing. And we, we have to be, we, we have to be prepared to swing at a dime. And I'm, I'm just hoping the numbers stay down. And that, that part of it was, was real good news. So that is, oh, I want to send out a few kudos, certainly to the whole staff for all the work they've done. But specifically for our IT staff and the paras and people that are dishing out computers and those, those things. We, we got a rush of requests over the last few weeks for computers. And some of our families waited until school started. We did receive some more computers and Jennifer Mon, Bo Young, and some paras are doing a great job dishing those out. I do think at some point in time in the next, you know, three to four months, we, we really have to look at our technology plan and have a, have a, have a solid conversation about a one to one. In talking with Tracy, there was a conversation a while back about one to one student computers. And it just kind of went away. I think that conversation needs to return. As I look at where Squim's at compared to districts around us, I, I think we are behind techno, technologically speaking. And I think it's time that we caught up. And that's going to be part of my capital projects discussion and a lot of other, other issues. But I, but I also think it's time to have that conversation about moving to a one to one platform. That is all I have.
Okay, thank you, sir. Just real quick. So on the, on the computers that were given out, those are predominantly desktops this time?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from the, from the board regarding Dr. Clark's report?
Question about, have we, about the 50 to 60 folks under, there were, were down. Are, do we, if we think that those are homeschool, are there, I know this is a tough question, but is there any way of, of, of marketing the, the, the options that we, that we do have available for those folks to try to recapture them? Maybe once?
It's my plan to have that conversation beginning next week.
Nice, okay.
With, with administrators and seeing if we can recapture some of those kids. I, we, some of the homeschool applications, I mean, we literally received today. So, I mean, we, we have, somebody pointed out Jennifer Lopez, I think it was Alyssa, she's doing great work. I, I do think that we can get some of those kids back and we have to get on top of it. But at this point in time, because we've received many of them so late, we haven't had a chance to do that.
Yeah. And the, the only other question, and I'm not sure if this is something that has been looked at or not. But with this, with, especially with it coming so, so late, but with the transportation stuff being funded, I believe a portion of that is it, we're able to bring materials out to, out to students. Have we, rather than the, like with libraries, the school libraries, or then instead of those like books from libraries sitting on the shelves, that sort of thing? If we thought about getting some of the, you know, have utilizing buses to get some library books out to students that may have less books in the home, that sort of thing?
I don't know that that's been a topic of conversation, but I will, I will bring that up. I do know that the librarians have amongst themselves had talked about some type of weekly distribution, you know, just kind of what, what we're doing with other school supplies and things like that. But the potential for taking books out does exist. And, and there, there's still some, transportation funding still has more questions than answers, to be clear. I, I think the news that we've heard is good. But I don't think it's going, I don't think our transportation funding, unless something miraculous happens in the legislature this spring, I don't think it's going to be all encompassing.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
Mr. Chair, I had a question.
Yep.
Rob, I'm sorry if you mentioned it, but you had on your update bullets, something regarding the SRO. Did I miss something that you mentioned?
Oh, yeah, I think I did last, I've just been in contact with Chief Crane. And, and maybe you know this, maybe you don't. If you haven't, it's my error. And that is that Kendren, our SRO for the last at least two years, maybe longer, has been promoted to the position of detective. So they have not hired her replacement. And one of the, I want to have an SRO. I'm committed to that program as, as I believe the board is and the community is. But at this time, with no students on campus, there is not a need for an SRO. So we're looking at, and we're working with Chief Crane. And I think they're going to interview for that position sometime in, in November. And that they would take over, or that person would take the position somewhere in the, after the first of the calendar year. And, and by that time, I hope we have students on campus. Right now, it, it's nothing that, you know, as, as many of you know, and it's been talked about at other board meetings, some school districts are making the conscious choice to go away from SROs. And it's my, my belief, and I believe the boards, that we, we've always had a great relationship with our SRO. We've been happy with our SRO. And there's no reason to change. But as, as, as we speak, there's no need for an SRO without students in the building.
Great. Thank you. And I, I would agree with you on both counts.
And, and, and the other thing, just to be clear with everyone about the SRO and funding, we pay half of his, of their salaries. We split that with the city.
So if there's an opportunity to thank, you know, Officer Lighter, Laker, for her service to the district, that may not hurt, especially in current environments. And if you know, are they, are they hiring an SRO essentially from scratch? Or are they looking for somebody who's already in the law enforcement field?
I don't, I don't, I don't want to speak for Chief Crane.
Yeah, fair enough.
It would not, I, I'm trying to remember the email she sent me. And I believe the potential for it being an internal hire is pretty good.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I ask an additional question of Dr. Clark?
Absolutely.
Doctor, are we, are we still, or do we still have a plan prior to meeting that, that threshold of being at moderate for that time? Do we, in the meantime, are we still serving stu, or still serving students with, with needs who can't be, where their needs can't be met virtually, the IP students somehow in a physical setting? I just wasn't.
Not at this point in time. That would start on Monday.
Okay. So, but that is, that is the plan.
And I believe the number of students is somewhere between nine and 12.
Okay.
So we're not talking about a large number of students. Many of the, the summer school numbers were high 20s. And many of those parents are opting to wait a little bit longer. So those students, I, many of them, they need services. Our, our individuals are, are either doing it virtually or going, I believe there's some home visits. But in the last conversation I had with Mrs. Langston, I believe the number's going to be somewhere between nine and 12. And that will start on Monday.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Director Jeffries, get your hand up. Sorry.
Yeah. I really, I'm glad to hear about the, the meal program being extended. Because I think it's vital for a lot of our students, it's vital and maybe the best nutrition they get all day some days. It's still very important, correct, that parents, all parents, fill out the free and reduced application because that is tied to so much other kind of funding that comes down through the federal government. And probably the state is our numbers for free and reduced lunch are very important. So everybody, we need to get those numbers filled out, even though we're giving out these free meals. Is that right?
That is correct. Thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah, thank you, Director Jeffries. That's a great point.
And I do want to add one thing about that, that I learned this morning, that really isn't in the memo, is that they've extended this program through December 31 or until the money runs out. And that's on a federal basis, not a state basis. And no one's quite sure what that means.
Okay. And Director Stauffer, I think you had your hand up?
Yes, I just, the SRO question came back to my mind. And so I, SRO, which stands for School Security Officer, those are primary from a local police agency, police force. And there's mandatory certification trainings for them to be designated an SRO. And then after that is what's called your SSOs, which, those are like the next step down, or don't have all the requirements that the, a police officer has. And then also campus security officers, which is what I believe what Mr. T is and has qualifications. And then from there, private security firms. And all those, there's some state mandates, RCW is involved in the exact training requirements that they have. And most, they're supposed to be things like cultural diversity, understanding, de-escalation, frustration practices. Those are part of the training criteria certification for, for all three of those entities type thing.
All right. Thank you. Okay. No further questions. Let's move on to our board business. All right. First up, we have a discussion on the presentation that Director Stauffer had earlier regarding a, the legislative priorities. So go ahead and raise your hand. go ahead and raise your hand if you have any uh, questions, and uh, I'll call on you and we'll, we'll get us a Director Ku. You're up.
Hey, it worked, all right. Um, first of all, thank you for the presentation, Jim. Um, I appreciate that. And hopefully, uh, an opportunity for us to engage in a meaningful way uh, for this session. Um, you know, and I, I, I look at and I respect the, the formal process of WASDA and what they do. Um, you know, admittedly, a bit skeptical of it at first, but I see the, I see the value in the year-over-year iteration of it and how uh, while it doesn't move quickly, it certainly um, has a lot of thoughtfulness into it. Um, I'm disappointed, obviously, that we're not going to have an in-person this year, um, primarily, I mean, I selfishly have enjoyed them, but also primarily for our student reps. Um, but it is what it is. Um, I guess the main question I have is uh, the prevailing belief across the spectrum, whether you're talking about a county municipality, a school district, um, you know, economic development offices, um, is that this upcoming session is going to be extremely focused. Um, and really, I think uh, defensive is kind of the main posture. Um, with that, I mean, are there any, I guess, are there any things you would draw attention to? I guess, Jim, sorry, this is a question for you. Um, that we should be prepared to focus on, and not, not at the abandonment of these more monolithic uh, stances uh, and position statements, but um, you know, anything that's kind of coming hot down the pike that uh, would either potentially harm or benefit our students uh, that you would recommend we, we as a board really focus on?
Sure, thank you for that question. Um, first, um, everybody can be there. We won't be there as, as a live in body, but you can be there live virtual. Um, anybody is welcome to join from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM on the 25th, so I encourage that, I encourage our student reps. I know after a while it will, it will get a little dry and mundane, but uh, please um, plan to attend. Uh, from there, um, I think the focus should be looking at those uh, 20 um, new positions that uh, under legislation, um, that are uh, and some of them are very specific to COVID and uh, funding. And uh, the tall elephant in the room that we're going to be facing. Now that, some clarity, these positions are, they're written in a, a manner that they're, they're broad, that allows the formerly known as the Government Relations Team to, when a bill comes out, or when a representative or senator comes to us, comes to them and says, hey, I'm thinking of this bill, then our team can go, ah, okay, uh, that uh, that, yeah, we can talk about that. Um, we can prob-, we can talk about supporting it or being maybe neutral on it. And um, and from there, so I, as one of those DA four reps, I get notified really quick. Um, and then I turn around and send those out, and uh, it's uh, I will keep us up to date as quickly and as efficiently as possible on uh, um, and like I, this evening, I just shared the one from Representative Ortiz Self, which uh, um, I think we, and here we have an opportunity right now, and, or at least um, until uh, January um, to look at that one and put some in, provide some input. And there will be other ones like that. Um, I'm, I'm very sure, especially after the elections get over in uh, 55 days, whatever that is. So, thank you for the question, Director Ku.
Yeah, thank you. And that's a great reminder. Um, sorry to keep dumping on our student reps, but a good point about these established positions. And again, I, I previously described them as monolithic, but where the, where the activity happens, or the rubber meets the road, occurs when the bills come up and we use these as a backdrop by which to either support the bills or uh, voice our objections. So that, that's a great reminder. Um, I think that's all I have. Um, really looking forward to the workshop. Um, I appreciate uh, the responsiveness of the Executive Committee to put that together and uh, our ledger up as well. And uh, looking forward to the discussion, and I believe it's worth it, so I'm glad we're doing it. Thank you.
All right, great, thank you. Uh, Director Pickens, have your hand up.
Thank you. Um, Director Stoffer, uh, I guess more of a, more of a question. Um, in the same regard as to us deciding if um, we're as a board going to be supporting these, would there, would there also need, if there, would there need to be a uh, is there, is there a um, is there an avenue to where the board could agree to, if there was one of these positions that we were opposed to, is that also an option as well?
Good question, thank you. So first, um, the survey that I will send to you guys, or that Tracy will here. But hopefully I can get it all put together. We'll have approximately 45 positions. And I, and I, again, I look at them, the lens I've always is, uh, what is our strategic plan? Are they in alignment? I- is there local needs? Um, then, you know, it's also, also legislative priority shouldn't matter of the zip code of our students live in, and I, you know, that's my director area hat saying that. Um, cause we have to be um, in that seat, thinking about all of our 1.1 million students type thing. But yes, so you, when we have this survey back, um, there's a pretty good slate. I, I like to, in the past, have gone to legislative with at least 20. And then, as we've been there, um, we've uh, a, a couple of years ago, let's see, I think uh, if you're back on the slide, it's a 2018, and uh, Director Ku was there with me, and he suggested the adding in the SLPs on the Federal Dream Act to our position, and uh, we did that there. Um, and then the, the beauty of this virtual is that you guys are, well, hopefully some of you will be there all day, and as you, I will. Um, and as you're hearing the other discussions, um, can text me and uh, or I can turn those voting credentials over to you type thing. And so what I encourage is everybody to look back at that, of my presentation and the recommendations, like on those uh, 20 RPs, the returning positions, in which uh, um, there was a, a great deal of outreach um, on those to see, we went back to the original school districts. Um, original school, or trying to find the school board director that had submitted a position, just to see, is there any changes here? And uh, so those 20, there was no, no amendments brought to the ledge committee over our summer vacation. And then, from there, three have come electronically here. So I hope that answers your question. I just, and I want to go back to our student reps, um, if they're still on the line, and I would be uh, available if they would like to have a, a separate teams meeting with another board director to uh, cover these more in detail at any time, but they're on their schedules, because I, I know it's a, it's a pretty heavy lift for them, but uh, I can, I can do that training also. Thank you.
Um, so I, I also just want to clarify one point. So there, there's an opportunity to um, to have limited discussion during, during the actual session then?
Yes, there is. I'm going to uh, at our next meeting, I'm going to have a, I will have a a separate phone that I've used for uh, my face mask team, in which I'm gonna, that will be the, to try to keep uh, things um, flowing or uh, on track type thing. I will, that will be the phone we can use. And then uh, um, Tracy will be sending out a notice that board members will be um, attending this. Um, and then our policy, you know, gives me the, the voting delegate. And so um, we have that workshop coming up on the 21st, and uh, hopefully we can cover that in a lot greater detail. Time allotted there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so uh, Director Pickens, if it operates like the in-person thing, like, for example, last year's, there was uh, one position that I had a strong um, uh, piece to, and uh, so I went to Jim and he gave me the voter delegate uh, badge, and then I went up to the microphone and, and uh, said my piece, and uh, um, so I, I would admit, and that's kind of what he's talking about, the same, same piece is keeping us, if we're all there, keeping in communication, just a matter of, it's like, hey, Jim, uh, I gotta, I, I gotta, I got something I want to say about this one. And uh, and then he pa-, he would pass that over to you to, to be able to do that.
Okay, yeah, I just have to, have to see if I'm able to get uh, get time off. I think it's on a Friday, right? So.
Yeah, okay, we got a couple more uh, uh, hands up here. Uh, I'll go ba-, I'll go over to Director Jeffries, uh, and then go back over to Director Ku after that.
Yeah, nothing much. Uh, like I did, did, yeah, I've been spending quite a bit of time listening to board members from other districts discuss these, and so that was very helpful. Um, I also spent time with the uh, the um, General Assembly handbook and went read through all of the proposals once or twice, actually twice, and made comments of my own, just little questions. And I think that's very useful to um, try to get a very um, working knowledge of what's written down there, at least, before we discuss. Also, I think um, I'd like to see or maybe do some investigation on what other organizations, other major players in the education in the state of Washington, what their priorities may be from the uh, Washington Education Association, to the uh, Washington School Superintendent, to uh, and administrators, to uh, League of Education Voters, and just see how our priorities match up to theirs. Cause my guess is, is, you know, listening to uh, board members even from, you know, far eastern Washington, Spokane, and other little places I've never heard of before, to tell you the truth. I had to look them up on uh, Google Maps to see where they were. Very, very similar um, concerns that uh, we have, and I mentioned that before. So looking forward to the process and see how all of this works. And um, don't know if I can be there all day, but I'm going to give it a shot to be there as long as I can. Looking forward to our workshops, so we can uh, set up our priorities. Thank you.
So I'm just back to Director Jeffries there. So uh, we do get um, the legislative priorities from what we call the other ABC groups. So WASDA, WASBO, which is, that's Darlene's organization, um, the Principal Association, um, all of those meet with the WASDA Strategic Advocacy. Um, and I, about a month ago, I did share the WASDA um, priorities. But all those entities are working right now on their priorities. And uh, we will see them. Um, I have, we have all last year's um, available, and uh, um, these ones we will see. Um, that's why I also post, or I shared last time, the Department of Natural Resources uh, um, proposals, in which um, just so you have a, kind of a view on uh, some occurring there. Um, some of that other work with Trustlands, uh, get opportunity to see fishing game and the um, priorities too, because it is, it's very important to have these discussions, relationships, because uh, you know, to just look strictly at our constitution, where education is paramount, and we about 60, 60 to 65% of the state's budget is education. And it's important to uh, have that conversation with other elected bodies from city councils, so the PUD, Fire District, Port, et cetera. But thank you for your question. Thank you.
Okay, back to you, Director Ku.
Great, thank you. And I guess not so much a question, but just a thought, piggybacking on Director Pickens' uh, um, question was, even in the, perhaps the ranking survey, um, and Jim, I think we had talked about this before, maybe not, um, is, in addition to ranking from, you know, top to bottom, uh, which I, I think is still helpful to you as the delegate. Um, if there is an opportunity to say that, no, I don't support this flat out, um, maybe that is something we could add to the survey in some way or fashion. Um, I don't, I don't want to over-engineer it or overthink it, but that is a good point. And, you know, the other comment too, and I appreciate uh, Director Jeffries, uh, the rigor that he just described in terms of going through the proposals, and, you know, perhaps we'll cover this ground uh, best at the workshop, but I, I am lamenting the lack of the ability to kind of caucus as a board in real time. Um, and so I also throw that out there as a half question to po-, potentially the ability to do that day of, um, through some technological means. Uh, you know, we do enjoy that, that privilege uh, under OPMA uh, to do that for these types of gatherings, but um, I also recognize that we, we just may be limited in, like you mentioned, text or uh, some other form of kind of raising the hand. But it is, it is pretty powerful to hear uh, arguments in the moment and respond accordingly. Um, so just, just some thoughts that uh, was prompted by some of the questions, but I appreciate the, the prep work you're doing, Jim, and um, like I said, I think it's well worth the effort.
Thank you very much. So, um, to clarify the uh, we'll call it the virtual rooms. So all of you are, are able to be in a room. And you will sign, you can sign in and leave at any time from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. I will be in another room, which has been a, a voting panel in front of it with red, green, yellow type thing. Um, and you will be, it'll be actually from how I'm learning it, is that um, it's you are available to reach out. I can reach back to you for clarification during that session. Um, I would, I ask that uh, everybody first focus on what is, and that the main part of, of the uh, assembly, and that's on that slide number three, where it talks about there's 12 um, amended clarified positions, 20 new proposals, 20 returning ones. Um, look back at our prior uh, priorities. You'll see same ones there. Think about uh, there's a lot of work been done on tribal relationships. Um, there's a government-to-government um, new position, which uh, I would strongly recommend supporting that. Um, and then um, for the final submission, um, that is not going to occur until the week of 28 September through the 5th of October. And yes, that could be a little problematic of getting that back out, um, but um, I will be uh, reaching back out aft-, at the end of the assembly on the 25th. It might be 8:05 PM. Um, the window for us to submit the actual priorities then opens up on Monday through the following Monday. And I'll be reaching out via our um, how we can, through uh, if it's, if we have to call another teams meeting, then maybe that, but uh, um, I'll be reaching back out saying uh, here's our, here's a list, do, are we still good with this or not, type thing? But you will be able to, during the assembly, to go, Jim, I'm not happy, I'm not good with that, that particular one. So please look at the items that are on uh, the, the first part of the presentation. Um, those, those new proposals, if there's any of those RP's that you're not, and that, you know, I mentioned before that those are all, they could be a possible consent agenda, because there was no input um, on those. And just as we, when we're looking at our agenda, we look at a consent agenda, we will pull an item out, and that, that will be the process, that if, if a district has if a district has a question on one of those twenty RP's, it'll be pulled out and discussed on the floor. So that's and then watch for the videos that's going to be coming out, watch for the one-page sheets that's going to be coming out and I'm excited about actually this format because it gives us the opportunity for all two hundred and ninety-five school districts to be there and and board members to participate and we haven't had that across all two hundred and ninety-five school districts and now this group choral and it's free. Tracy doesn't have to register us for hotel rooms unless unless we want to go down to the Holiday Inn and that and that will be our meeting space for that day. I don't know, but so thank you all. Is there anything from our students? I'd like to hear from our students.
Okay, well, sounds like nothing at this point. So with that, thanks, everybody for the discussion. Let's move on to discussion on acknowledgement of a tribal land. And Dr. Clark, I think you're going to lead that?
Yeah, well, I don't know if it was brought up at last board meeting or if Director Pickens brought it up at agenda setting or how it crossed our plate, but I, we have all attended meetings over the last, you know, year, two years where the one of the first speakers, not necessarily the first, but one of the first speakers has made an acknowledgement that this meeting is taking place on sacred land that was, you know, indigenous to various tribes and whatever. And the discussion came up is that would we be in, we, meaning the Squim School District Board, would we be interested in doing that? I said, you know, that sounds like a good idea, but I don't think that the chair and the vice chair can arbitrarily make that decision. So I bring that up to the board as a whole. And and again, I'm paraphrasing the comments. We, I I would look into the specifics of what we would, if we choose to do this, that I would look into the specifics of how this would be articulated and I would assume that it would be articulated at the front end of our meeting somewhere in the neighborhood of where we talk about our mission and our vision. So I put it up to the board for further discussion.
Director Pickens, I know you were part of that original discussion, so and we, I think we talked about it, our agenda planning as well. So, yep, you're up.
Yeah, just kind of, kind of what what Dr. Dr. Clark had said, I think, and it is something that I want to bring up, but I thought it was more appropriate when we were back in person to, but not knowing when that is going to happen. I do think it's, it's, it's very important that we, we acknowledge the 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 land that we're, we're conducting business on and that we're, we're operating our schools on. So I, I, it's, 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 it's truly important and that I'd like to see us certainly acknowledge that, but obviously do do even more to acknowledge that as we do in our schools, but I think it's, it's something our board should should make a priority as well.
All right, Director Koo.
Thank you. I, yeah, I appreciate us talking about this. Rob, when you made the, your update, I didn't, I wasn't sure where this was coming from, so this may have occurred in executive session. But I otherwise really like it. I guess my only pause, and this would only be just from somebody who has perhaps stepped in it in the past in terms of cultural sensitivities is just to consult with our local tribe on, you know, a method and manner that would be respectful to them. Or even, you know, you know, the the potential to hear that, no, this, this isn't something that we, the tribe would appreciate for for whatever reason, you know, I may be unaware of. So otherwise, I'm prepared to fully support it and I appreciate Director Pickens bringing this up.
And and to be clear, Director Koo and Director Gibson, Director Pickens, you correct me if I'm wrong, this came up in an agenda setting conversation.
Yeah, that that's correct.
Correct. Yep.
It's a great topic, so thank you.
I muted myself. Director Jeffries, I think you were next.
Yeah, I, I, I think we ought to follow forward on this and if appropriate, I would think this is something we should do. I'm not sure we need to wait till live meetings. All of the WASDA board meetings and smaller groups of of board director meetings from around the state, almost every one of them starts off their virtual conference with the host stating that they are, where they're sitting is on sacred ground that of the ancestors of the tribe and want to thank them for their stewardship of the of the land all this time. So I think virtually, if we decide to do this, I think we ought to do it virtually and not, we don't necessarily need to wait for live meetings and then when live meetings start up, it'll be a part of what we do. So I think we'll move forward on it and see what we can do. Thank you.
And Director Stoffer.
Sorry, I was getting to the unmute. I fully support this. I was actually going to, when we were taking a roll call, was going to acknowledge the land on that where my house sits type thing. So I'm glad that we have this here. Page six of the handbook there has the it has the step to articulate and that first one is the one that I have heard used the most of where it's just we acknowledge that we are on the traditional land of the, and I would, we, we should most definitely reach out to our tribal neighbors and Lonnie is the vice chair of Jamestown Scolop Tribe and I interact with her a lot on some of the other tribal conversations on education, but and I, I believe we, it's coming up on our one-year MOU signing with the tribe or I might have that date mixed up, but don't we have a renewal of our Mandarin of Understanding Agreement with Jamestown? And I think we should for our next meeting, go live and we should invite our tribal partners to the meeting also. And even some meetings, actual tribal elders have opened the meeting in recognition. We see that at the big WASDA conferences, so that and then it's, you know, because there are legislative priorities are sprinkled with about a half dozen, a dozen Native American and indigenous people language in in there. It's, this is very important and we should go forth with it. Thank you.
Okay, Assistant Superintendent Mon, I think I saw your hand up earlier. Do you want to partake in the conversation?
I did, Director Gibson, and I'm sorry, I, it's, it is on our website and Tracy had pulled it up, so I wanted to just let you know that that the the acknowledgement that we are on sovereign land is on our website. This was done with the tribe. Lonnie actually wrote a good portion of this information that is on our site. It's a newer part of our site and so if people want to just direct themselves to that, they can see a lot of that information. And then Director Stoffer did talk about the MOU that we do have with the tribe and I have reached out to them to ensure that we redo our MOU this year and and like with other people, Lonnie is very busy and she's going to get back to me, but we need to, we do need to update our MOU. So if there's anything on there that anybody would like to have changed, we can talk to Lonnie about that, but that that is directly from the tribe.
Oh, wonderful. Well, this actually, this gives this kind of a, a perfect kind of direction and precedence with what's already on our site and and directed by them as well. So thank you very much for pointing that out.
Director Gibson?
Yes.
My question back to Jennifer, is that, is that under the programs on our website? I think that's there.
Yeah, correct, Director Stoffer, that's under programs, under Native American program. We just updated some contact information for the tribe, so it has a little bit more detailed information. We did, did that at the beginning of the school year and Lonnie, Lonnie is aware and she's in communication with us and then as things need to change, we can update that accordingly.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Director Gibson, I will, I will bring a draft statement to the next board meeting for.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
And I'll get a hold of the tribe, I'll get a hold of either Lonnie or Ron.
Perfect. Appreciate that. Thank everybody for your, your comments and support. I think it's a great idea and we'll take some action on it next board meeting. Okay, next up, we have the discussion on the DNR discussion. So Director Koo, this is a topic you've been kind of bringing up off and on for, you know, probably close to a year now. So we get it back on the on the agenda here and kind of move on with that discussion. So I'm going to give you the floor.
Oh, great. Well, pleasant surprise, but thank you. I don't really have a spec- well, I take that back. I've been kind of beating the same drum, I think over the years is as a board. And I, I guess I'm not prepared fully to discuss this tonight, but I want to be respectful to the alacrity or the the pace at which this board moves and make sure we're not belaboring an item. But, you know, I do think we need to to have a robust discussion around the DNR and specifically, there was a recent call to action, as you know, that we had put on the back burner because of COVID about potentially joining a class action lawsuit or maybe not class action, I'm overstating that, but a lawsuit with our junior taxing district colleagues in DA four about essentially a mechanism by which to recognize that the DNR, you know, certainly not out of malice, or I don't know if anyone thinks that, but has failed to perform to the level of harvest activity that they were held to under the previous timber harvest calculation and how, if at all, they're addressing the arrearsage issue. Because at the end of the day, this does affect Squim School District. And so, you know, not to, not to belabor the matter, obviously, DNR harvest activity in some areas benefits school districts throughout Washington State. But what certainly has my interest peaked significantly more than that is what specifically benefits the Squim School District and our students. I think we, we certainly have a mandate by our voters who have, you know, put us into these positions to make sure we're doggedly pursuing anything and everything that's owed to our students. And so I want to make sure that we're giving this the attention and the thoughtful discourse it deserves, including at some point whether or not to participate in the lawsuit in recognition that if something were to come, some sort of financial remedy were to come from the lawsuit, that only if we were to participate, would we be the recipient of such benefit. So when the time is right, and I will respectfully defer to the chair and the vice chair on when that is, I think a pending dialogue that can be had is with the lead agency in that lawsuit with the DNR. In my conversations with them, excuse me, over the past few months, gosh, I can't even remember when that first popped up. And also with other school districts in our area, they, they're more than willing to come speak with us. They're, I think I would characterize them as otherwise indifferent as to whether or not we participate, but are more than willing to come speak to us to share why they chose to, you know, pursue the path of litigation and why that may make sense for our district. So I think it's something we need to, you know, need to keep on our radar. You know, we need to keep our presence at the table with DNR as that occurs with the Trustland Advisory Committee and other bodies that liaise with the DNR on a regular basis, but I, I just want to make sure we're not inadvertently snoozing is the word that comes to mind, but forgive me, I don't mean something that derogatory. Just making sure the five of us are paying attention to this and recognizing the direct impact it has not to students across the state, but to Squim School District students because it's their parents in our community that has elected us. And I think it's absolutely paramount that we are doggedly pursuing each and every resource that we are entitled to. I guess a footnote to that would also be just the broader plan with the the future harvest calculation and where that fits in, you know, as a board and just staying abreast and tied into that. So again, in the, in the joy of having or I guess the joy of leading off the conversation, that's, you know, where my mind is at and I look forward to hearing thoughts from colleagues and how best to pursue this for the benefit of Squim students.
Okay, Director Pickens, have your hand up.
Thank you. Um, yeah, just, just to touch base a little bit about it and I, I don't know that I, that I cer- certainly I think some more research is required and I, I'm, I'm happy to have further discussion on it. When we talk about the projected harvest calculation and those details. But my, I guess just to put it, put it into the room, I think that my, my concern with, with joining a lawsuit of this nature, while I do agree that we, our funding comes from multiple sources and we need to make sure that that is is captured as it was designed to be captured for, for the benefit of our students. At the same time, I think when you, when you compare our states to other states and why, why it always seems like a a fight to get to fully fund schools and to fully fund special education and all these other avenues, I think if we're actually looking at the root cause of the problem, I don't think it's a, a DNR issue. I think it's mainly because we're one of the most regressive tax states in the, in the, in the United States and I think that that's, that's an avenue where we really need to be focused on is, is fixing that, the, the way that schools are, are funded. So I, I, so I hesitate with the idea of joining any kind of lawsuit and I know that's not the decision that we're making tonight, but just to kind of put my, my concerns out there regarding, I, I just don't think it really attacks the, the root cause of our problem. So that's just my thoughts on it. Thanks.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Director Pickens. And kind of to tag a little bit on that, and I'll go back to you, Director Koo. And just real quick note, just got a message from Tracy. It looks like we may have lost Jimmy, lost. Oh, he's back. Okay. So with that said, you know, I, I haven't, I haven't put this on my radar as much as I probably should, but, you know, as one thing, as Director Pickens had stated, would be more about just that the, the, the research and the details regarding are we actually meeting the, that requirement or not meeting that requirement? Because the other part to that too is just whether it's funding that supports us or not, it's, you know, it's, it's a, it's part of it. Okay, if we're, we say we're going to cut 100 trees down, did we cut 100 trees down? Not that, well, we said we're going to cut 100 trees down, we cut 100 tree down, but we think you should cut 150 trees down. That's a whole different topic. And that's may not be, you know, part of the discussion, but because I would, on, on a personal note, you know, if that's, that's what part of this is, I, I would struggle to support that piece as well. Now, if we're not meeting that piece, then, you know, that's another discussion. But, but again, I think also Director Pickens brought up a great point just regarding that, you know, I know that this is kind of the hand that we're dealt and, but yet, you know, maybe we, maybe we, as a whole, we reevaluate that hand and, and see if there's other options that are out there. So anyway, Director Stoffer, I think is back with us and he's got his hand up. So I'll let him speak.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, it's, the whole house went dark here for a moment. So I'd like if Tracy could pull up the, the attachment. And then I also like to refer people to under Darlene's tab on, on our website. There's a pretty, there's a presentation, but here is this, we'll go with this first. So this tells right here the, the three main areas of where timber revenue comes from. And we, so there's common school trust lands, which by, by our constitution, that provides funding for, that's available for every school district as long as they pass a bond. And that's, that's that middle common column there. And then you have the state forest trust lands. And that goes back to what occurred was that homeowners, property owners could no longer pay their property tax. And because they had harvested everything and, and it wasn't being managed. And so that fell under the Department of Natural Resources. I'm just giving a basic history. And so then from there, the harvesting that occurs in a school district and then other junior taxing districts, then funding goes to the county for distribution to those junior taxing districts. Now we have 22 junior taxing districts total in Clallam County. But school districts are the only one of those 22 junior taxing districts that were faced with what was called commonly referred to as the clawback. And up until two years ago, yes, we got our for, our state forest revenue, but then OSPI reduced our apportionment dollar for dollar equal to that Squim has over the years. And if, if you just look at our numbers for last year, we got, and because of that, oh, that revision of that WAC, we received 308,000, which we normally would not have happened if that WAC hadn't been revised. We also received another 116,000 from federal forest, which is tied in. And then there was the 24,000 K in timber exercise tax. So, and I, and I know I spent a great deal of time with, and it was one of the reasons why I first ran, because I was hearing that boards, districts need to do more about state, about these lands. And so I went, I need to learn about this. And that's why I've immersed myself in this learning and have attended port meetings and regional meetings and that DNR does with our county and port. And so we go to the lawsuit that got filed, and there's also a lawsuit by the environmentalist also. And I, and I think a question we need to ask ourselves, we ought to ask ourselves is, can we articulate what harm to Squim School District? Well, when you look at the Sustainable Harvest Plan and the Marv Mulett study, and I, Squim actually gains a 10% increase in revenue. And of the five school districts in, in Clallam County, three of us actually gain. Colia Valley gains, Port Angeles gains, we gain. The two that don't are Cape Flattery and Crescent. They, they have not joined the lawsuit. And from our, my last conversations, probably six weeks ago, is that don't intend, because there's, it's, we all face that clawback again, because it's some legislators feel that we're getting paid twice. And, and so that's where legislative reps on the committee, we have fought diligently to, to keep that and will probably face it again, because it was only effective for this last biennium. And so I think we have to ask ourselves, and then I'll also go back to, there's a, an arrearsage. And there was a lot of papers, a lot of numbers, a lot of figures being done. And the one figure was for over a 10-year period, it was 100,000 that Squim did not receive. So an average of 10K per year. That was also during the midst of when that clawback was occurring. So we weren't, we weren't getting it in the first place. So when folks say that we're not doing enough, we are doing, we are doing more and then some. And we have several legislative positions. We have a permanent position that, in a, a read them that are on the back of that, that one flyer, and it says, was to shall initiate or support legislation preventing the state from withholding monies from the state's monthly apportionment in the amount equal to state forest revenue or to the federal forest fees received by school districts. Our permanent position goes back and covers the Enabling Act of 1889. And this was first interreduced in 1985, or 1966, actually, and then has been updated and followed. Now, what we're seeing now is what is actually on our website. And it, it breaks down how we receive those into those areas. There's four that are there. Just if you could keep scrolling. Thank you, Tracy. This deals with the federal forest.
Okay, Director Stoffer?
That's all I have.
Yeah, thank you. And that's fine. We just don't need a full history lesson on all, all of this. I appreciate the, some of the points, though. Back to you, Director Koo.
Okay, thank you. And I, I remembered what I was forgetting earlier in my previous statement. Yeah, one of the things that Jim just spoke to that really prompts, you know, my, my strong recommendation that we engage on this topic more than we have is that clawback piece. And so a recent example, if my rough math is, you know, generally correct, you know, 400,000 was a net benefit in one fiscal year. At the time, it was even more, but currently, you know, that represents 1% of our budget. And so, you know, the point about materiality, is this something we need to sink our teeth into or spend more time for? I, I fully embrace and understand, but I'd also say too, that that's for teachers or that's an SRO and six paras or, you know, whatever the breakdown is. So, you know, and, and without sounding theatrical, I guess the reason this, this sits with me so much is we need to go to our community for a big ask. And by big ask, I mean passing a bond. You know, we, we've definitely talked about, in fact, I think we're queued up to talk about a little bit of that in the near future of a levy, which is a smaller ask. But I ask my colleagues, how can we in good conscience go to the voters of our community to ask for their taxpayer dollars and not have fully explored, let alone pursued the full extent of dollars that are owed to this district? Again, not to students throughout the state, but to Squim School District, specifically the, the timberlands that are ours, that the DNR is the steward of. And so this isn't, you know, this isn't brought up with malice, but I see it as a responsibility in our part to at least explore the matter. So, you know, and frankly, and I don't want to call anyone out, there were some misstated statements earlier today, which speaks to how complex of an issue this is. And so I would encourage, at the very least, a conversation with folks who are very engaged on this topic and, you know, who can speak to why it may make sense to participate in a lawsuit. And I'm not fully arrived that it does for us, but I also know that it's little more than adding our name to a line item. There's no financial cost to the district. So there's probably a time and a place that I would sit there and say, well, why not? And, you know, one thing I guess to, to clarify on, and Director Gibson, I think you pointed it out, and I wholeheartedly agree with you, is the harvest calculation, we are absolved from the responsibility of having to get our fingers into the, the very specifics of this tree versus this tree. We, we certainly reserve that right. Every 10 years, that harvest calculation is put together. And that's also done with environmental interests and other groups. So there's a lot of sausage making, to borrow the term, that occurs. And I don't want to say that we shouldn't be involved, but we don't have to be. And I agree with you. At, at some point in time, we have to recognize we're school board directors and our, our focus should be limited. But regardless, that's put together and that becomes the playbook. The issue is the playbook hasn't been met. And that has had a net detrimental effect to the Squim School District, the very district that the five of us are elected to represent. And so that, I guess, is the point that's keeping me up at night and why I feel that this is worth, this is meritus of enough of a conversation to have. And so that, that would be my advocacy. All points noted about where we should focus our efforts. Director Pickens, your point about what the real problem is, I love that. That resonates with me in a big way about looking for fundamental solutions versus symptomatic solutions. I do think this is a part of that, at least exploring it. And while I may sound arrived at a, you know, at a position, I, I implore you, I'm not, I really just want to talk about this more and make sure we're not, you know, missing meaningful conversations that need to occur. You know, I recognize we all have various slants to our personal opinions, as, as I certainly do. But I would just say, as a board, I think this is something we, we need to engage on in some meaningful fashion. And we have stakeholders out there who are willing to help inform us as a board better than I can or anyone else as far as what's at stake. Thank you.
Okay, Director Jeffries, looks like you want to chime in.
Not much. I agree with Director Pickens. I'm not really in favor of getting involved with a lawsuit, especially when it's very complex and confusing. I am concerned about the continued attempts on which means we wouldn't, if my understanding is right, we wouldn't get any of that timber money, no matter what the formula might be, because OSPI would take credit for it. A little bit confused that it sounds to me like we are getting money. And I'm confused that maybe does the, is the laws that that change it where we wouldn't get that money? I'm just saying it's very complex. I'm not sure we need to have a big board meeting on this or bringing in the arguments, because my understanding is a lot of those arguments have already been made at the state level. Maybe an FAQ sheet on both sides of the issues, so we could clarify it and try to simplify it down. But I don't really have an interest of rehashing what the legislature and various lobbying organizations have already rehashed evidently over and over again. And I'm not interested in getting involved in a lawsuit at, at this point, because I'm not sure we would gain anything from it. And it would distract us from what we need to have done. I do agree, we've got, you know, enrichment levy and capital projects levy and a bond levy or bond issue coming up in our future. And we've got a lot of communication to do with the community to convince them that this is what they need to pay their money on. And I, I'm not sure how much time I'd like to spend on this, this issue, which seems to come up over and over and over again. And I think, you know, there ought to be a way to get a white paper out or FAQ for us to look at and let's move on.
Okay, Director Koo, did you want to add something there? Director Koo?
Oh, I guess it would help if I hit unmute, wouldn't it? I'll leave, I'll leave it at this and I want to be respectful for our time tonight. And I appreciate where Director Jeffries has come from. I would respectfully contend, contend that most of us do not have a clear view of kind of the fence posts on this matter. And that's, and, and I, I could be in error as to the fence post that I believe I, I understand of it. And so in saying that, I would absolutely say that this is worth another thoughtful conversation. And I only used 400,000 in a single year that was not clawed back from the state. And I don't want to, I don't want to propose that these are mutually exclusive pursuits. I absolutely think that we should be fighting, frankly, ferociously with the state to ensure that our money is not clawed back. In fact, one of the questions I'm asking is those timberlands that are specifically tied to the Squim School District have nothing to do with the state. Those are our school, those are our timberlands for the benefit of our students. And I believe, and I could be unfounded here, that there is some money or some responsibility shirt with OSPI deducting funds from the general funds to us. We effectively become just, just as on the same footing as Redmond, who does not have timberlands available to them. And forgive me if I'm wrong on that, I'm just picking on Redmond. But we do. And that is specifically for our students. So I think we need to absolutely pursue anything and everything that would threaten the clawback. I agree with you that if that's in place, then the net benefit or detriment is neutral and what's worth it. But as I stand here, I would, I would strongly employer, implore our executive team to at least have the wisdom to have a conversation with the most educated folks in the room on why or why not. We may consider participating in a lawsuit that directly benefits the Squim School District students. I cannot stress that enough. And, and/or what our approach should be with the legislature, who arguably be looking to reinstate the clawback that OSPI so generously suspended this last session. So that's my final appeal. I, I appreciate y'all bringing this up to discuss. I, I don't know if I've impressed upon folks enough to pay attention to this, but $400,000 per year is pretty meaningful to me and I hope it is to you as well.
Okay, thank you, Director Koo and team for, for that. And I guess, you know, as I stated further, it's just something that's not admittedly been directly on my radar, but thanks for bringing it back and we'll look at this more. Okay, moving on, we got a last bit of business before we can, we can head out. So we got a first reading of Policy 3122, excused and unexcused absences.
I'm muted. That just articulates the
I'm muted. That just articulates the policies and the procedures of this uh how how we mark absences due to the COVID uh virus. And this is limited to this year, I believe.
All right, thank you. So we will have this for our next meeting for uh approval. Uh next up, we have a first reading Policy thirty-four fourteen, infectious disease.
This just this changes a couple of things, addresses uh changes some verbiage, and then addresses that uh that the district outline who is required and what positions are required to have CPR and or first aid cards. So that's what it does. It's an update to apology uh policy we currently have.
All right. And next up, we have a first reading of Policy thirty-four eighteen, response to student injury or illness. Probably another update here.
Yeah, that's all it is.
And then one more on a first reading of sixty-five twelve, infection control program.
Uh it update, basically, it addresses staff immunizations, and it makes staff immunizations for those who were born after nineteen fifty-seven uh applicable by the immunization policy, very, very similar to the students. So that's what it does.
Okay. And then last up, we have a resolution uh thirteen to eighteen.
And this this will require a vote.
Okay.
And this essentially extends the suspension of policy, I believe, to December thirty-one, twenty twenty, similar to a resolution you passed last spring.
All right, Director Jeffries, you have your hand. Uh well, first, we need a motion on this uh before we have any discussion.
Uh for the sake of discussion, I'd be willing to move to approve as presented.
Okay, can I get a second?
I'll second, Director Pickens.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Director Jeffries.
Yeah, Dr. Clark, we had this resolution or similar resolution before. Can you give me a couple of examples of how you use this or how the district put this to use over the last four, five, six months?
I I'm not sure that that I can. Um we we the 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 specific policies that I would say that we didn't follow were the policies such as grading, taking of attendance, and those type of issues where those also were reflected in board conversations and uh in in part of our reopening plans and our continuous learning plans. But last year, for example, I'll give you the example was grading. We at the K eight level, we gave either S's and U's or P's and F's. At the nine and twelve level, you got an A or an incomplete. And that those those are examples of where we did not follow current board policy. And but we have articulated that in our continuous learning plan and our grading plans that were accepted by OSPI.
So at some point, whatever we did um that didn't follow our um traditional policies eventually got approved at the OSPI level.
I think that I I would hope that that's an accurate statement. I'll I'll look through that, and I'll have a conversation with Assistant Superintendent Mon. But I don't think this was a resolution that we acted upon a great detail.
Okay, I'm just checking when when you think this, when we had used this in the past. So thank you.
Excuse me. Uh Director Ku had your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. And I think uh Director Jeffries um articulated my question in a far more intelligent manner. Uh so thank you for your response uh to that one. And I guess just the the broad uh backstop in recognition that obviously suspension of policies is not normal course of business or otherwise desirable um in normal circumstances. Are there any specific changes to uh this resolution that we have before us uh that differ from the last one that we approved? Uh or any contextual um, you know, why why is that you would share?
Other than dates, no.
Okay. Thank you. I have no concerns otherwise, just to be explicitly clear.
Okay, um and I think based on a message, we lost Director Stauffer again. Having just having some power outage issues over there. Um but uh we have enough for quorum here. So uh with that said, um if there's no further discussion, uh all is in favor of this uh resolution signified by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, yeah, go ahead.
Um it only because this is such a unique circumstance and scenario. Um I I think it would be wise to uh perhaps not get an official vote from Director Stauffer, but in anything uh in semblance of recording uh perhaps his position on this, the the quorum of the board obviously just approved this, and that stands. But I just uh I don't want to take this uh particular resolution too lightly.
Gotcha. Good point taken.
And and I I think just to make the board aware of i- if there are decisions that uh are made uh that do violate policy or contractions, they violate contradict policy, I will make you aware of them ASAP.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think that is the end of our discussion for this evening. Um anybody with anything for the good of the order?
I don't mean to be a microphone hog, but just excited with uh Alyssa and Olivia back at the back at the helm and really excited to work with both of you.
Uh Director Jeffries.
Just mute myself. Um I think losing Jim, losing um Director Stauffer, losing connection for whatever reason, that does bring up some interesting scenarios down the road if we're going to continue virtual meetings where we're possibly in the middle of a meeting, being three of us, all of a sudden they're lost from a meeting forum for a power outage or some other kind of concern. So that's something to um put in the back of our minds is how would we how would we handle that?
Yeah, it's a great point. Uh thanks for for bringing that up. And by the way, we did just get a message from uh Jim that he uh supports this resolution. Okay, anything else?
Can we can we count his vote his vote as such, then?
I believe based, well, I know, but I but but I believe based on our policies that uh we um, since we're virtual, and it's a virtual vote anyway, uh that that can be done.
Okay, I think you're right, but I would double check.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, our our uh our uh, I mean, our policy does, we do have a policy based on um, you know, being able to call in if we were in a physical meeting and and being able to uh be a participant on the uh in the actual uh board meeting at that time anyway, so. Um and we're a virtual event and you use virtual methods, so but uh um I guess we'll get clarification on that just to verify.
We could suspend policy, too.
Gotcha.
I'm just referring to the previous.
Yeah.
About that, too.
Yeah, there we go. Okay. All right. Okay, anything else, gang? Thanks again for uh, yeah, go ahead, Dr. Clark.
No, I just said thank you. I was just gonna say thank you.
Yep, yep. Thanks, everyone, again, for uh some uh good conversation, uh good meeting. And uh everybody enjoy your um rest of your evening and our short week. Good night.
Thanks, y'all.
Thanks to everybody who hung in. Thanks to everybody who hung in, everybody.